Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, May 5th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have eighteen items on this evening's agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, April 28th, 2025.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to send—no, we're not sending them anywhere. Move to accept and place on file the minutes.
Motion is made in second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor, oppose, the motion carries nine zero. Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Marlboro Hospital and UMass Memorial Realty, Inc. to allow for a proposed eight thousand square foot expansion of the emergency department, a new multidisciplinary clinic, and a proton therapy center. Order number twenty-five dash one hundred, nine four one eight.
Okay, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages. First, the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. And then fourth, questions from the City Council. So we'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. President, sorry.
Counselor Robey.
Thank you. Please note that I am recusing myself from this.
And I have that written in big letters here, too. We will let the record reflect that Counsel Robey will not be participating in the public hearing. Yes. Attorney Falk?
Thank you, President Austin. Counselors, Attorney Brian Falk with Myrick, 100 Front Street in Worcester, here on behalf of the applicant, Marlboro Hospital and UMass Memorial Realty. Here with me tonight is John Kelly and Ellen Carlucci from UMass Memorial and Marlboro Hospital and Brian Malisi from Haley Ward Engineering. This is an application for a special permit for several exciting projects at Marlboro Hospital. Marlboro Hospital and UMass Memorial propose a $36 million, eight thousand square foot expansion of the emergency department, more than doubling the number of treatment rooms from thirteen to twenty-seven, and other state-of-the-art improvements. The second floor of the expanded emergency department would house a new $6 million multidisciplinary clinic, treating patients with complex and chronic conditions. We're also proposing a $40 million proton therapy center at UMass Memorial Cancer Center at Marlboro Hospital. This advanced cancer treatment involves precision targeting and is particularly effective in treating children. The proton therapy center in Marlboro would be only the second such facility in New England. On the site plan that you see here, the existing hospital buildings are in tan. The blue area towards the front left would be the expanded emergency department and multidisciplinary clinic, and the blue area to the rear of the building would be the expanded cancer center with the new proton therapy center. Just about to pull up a rendering of—this is the front of the hospital with the expanded emergency department and multidisciplinary clinic. Emergency department will be on the same level as the existing emergency department. And again, the expanded emergency department would include twenty-seven state-of-the-art treatment rooms, up from thirteen. The ED would also add two bays that can combine to serve patients in need of additional space, along with two trauma rooms. Project will help alleviate overcrowding, reduce patient wait times, improve the patient care experience, and enhance staff morale. The new $6 million multidisciplinary clinic would be on the second floor of this new expanded wing. That clinic will bring together healthcare professionals from various specialties within the UMass Memorial Health Medical Group, providing patients with comprehensive, coordinated care closer to where they live. This next slide, this is a rendering of the new proton therapy center, an expansion of the UMass Memorial Cancer Center at Marlboro Hospital, which opened in 2013. New proton therapy center will expand the life-saving care offered at the Marlboro campus. Proton therapy is an advanced cancer treatment that improves the precision of radiation in targeting tumors. This reduces potential damage to healthy tissue in the body and the amount of radiation that's needed and the side effects from treatment. Technology is particularly effective in treating children, minimizing unintended cell damage. Marlboro would be just one of two locations offering this treatment in New England. I'm going to turn now to John Kelly, Chief Operating Officer at Marlboro Hospital, with some additional details on these projects. John?
Great. Thank you, everyone. John Kelly, I'm the Chief Nursing Officer and Chief Operating Officer at Marlboro Hospital. Thanks for having me tonight. I've been fortunate to be at Marlboro Hospital for eleven years. This is month of May, it's actually my eleventh month anniversary, so I'm quite familiar with Marlboro and Marlboro Hospital over the years, and it's—you know, I'm proud to work there. We do a really great job taking care of the patients in the community, and if we can't take care of you, we make sure we get you to the right—the right spot. But we've had incredible growth in the emergency department over the years, and you know, we started off when I was—when I got there eleven years ago, around twenty-two, twenty-three thousand visits, and now we're just under thirty thousand. You know, when I say just under, but just a couple hundred patients, we're in the twenty-nine thousands and change. So the emergency department's gotten a lot busier, and with our current volume, you know, the emergency department is just really not able to take care of the patients that are coming into it every day. That, along with the behavioral health patients and all of the kind of the thirteen current treatment rooms we have, we are frequently overcrowded, and there's patients in the hallway, and it's just—you know, it's not a—it's not a great environment to take care of patients in the hall. If you come there, and there's—you know, we have violent or intoxicated patients, and you know, then we have a grandmother or a young child getting stitches. It's—you know, quite dissatisfying for them, and it's not really the environment we want to take care of patients in, or the environment they want to be in. So by adding these additional spaces, the rooms will be able to safely provide care in rooms for patients. You know, there's about—we can take care of about sixteen hundred patients in a room per year. Once again, it depends how they're spread out, or if they're spread out perfectly, that works out—works out great, but that's not usually the case. But with this—with the additional space, we'll be able to—to care for everyone that comes in there. You know, I think Brian had mentioned something.
John, like—I guess you gotta stay by the microphone. You can take the microphone out and walk around if you want, but you have to stay by the microphone.
I'll build up for that part. Thanks. You know, Brian spoke—spoke of some of these things about UMass Memorial's health missions, provide the best-in-class patient care, compassionate to care to the communities we serve. You know, the emergency department expansion of the proton therapy will lead to a better patient health outcomes, improve the care experience and access to tertiary care, enhance caregiver satisfaction, and strengthen healthcare in central Massachusetts. This project also will contribute significantly to the economic development of the Marlboro community and bordering areas. Brian had mentioned this a little bit ago, thirty-six million dollar expansion of the ED, so I don't want to kind of read necessarily everything to you again. The—I will jump down to the bottom part of this is the CT scan, and that's a part of—will be part of the emergency department expansion. That's going to go in the current hospital space, right side of the emergency department. This will provide us with two CAT scanners, which is a huge boost, because I have a lot of patients that come to the emergency department, you'll end up needing a CAT scan, so we do CAT scans for outpatients, inpatients, and all of the folks in the emergency department. So this will really allow us to do more CAT scans for the community. It's also will be a procedural CAT scan, not the—not a—there's—there's three levels of CAT scans, like a basic CAT scan, level one procedure, then like a level two procedure. This is in the middle, so it'll be able to do biopsy work, breast MRIs, be able to do some biopsies in your liver, your stomach, and other areas. Once again, being able to provide this service at Marlboro versus having to send people out to a different hospital, you know, usually being Worcester to get these services. So really a huge benefit, and you know, this is very exciting opportunity to get this CAT scan along with this project. You know, and I'm going to swap and talk about cancer center for a moment, and UMass Memorial Cancer Center at Marlboro Hospital has been operating within the medical center license. So we have the Marlboro Hospital license and medical center license. The cancer center operates under the medical center license since opening in October of 2013. The key features include a linear accelerator and a CT simulator technology for radiation therapy, medical oncology, and access to a fully integrated system-wide electric health record. The strong foundation for advanced cancer care at Marlboro Community has laid the groundwork for even more new and exciting opportunities to enhance cancer care treatment regionally throughout the state. We're hoping to acquire a proton therapy system for the UMass Memorial Cancer Center at Marlboro Hospital, expand the life-saving care offered. And so you'll—right now you hear a lot about LINAX, and that's the—that's the radiation, how it's—how you're getting it normally. The proton therapy system, which Mass General has one, is the only one in New England, so people travel all over the place to come get this treatment. There's a long waiting list to get into it, so frequently why this might be the best care way to deliver the radiation, people can't get access to it. They can't get—they—they don't do it. Their waiting list is too long. So the difference between—and this is interesting, I promise—the difference between the radiation that's getting delivered is LINAC will go right through you, right? So if it's a proton—if it's a—they're delivering the radiation, if you have to treat here, on my hand, it goes right through my hand, and will only stop once they're shielding, that will protect it. So it's the lead line. So if—it's your brain, it goes all the way through your brain and damages all the tissue on the other side of that, where the tumor is, where the proton can be triggered to deliver, you know, an exact measurement, so where it ends. So you have to go six inches into the head where the—where the tumor sits, it will go six inches, disperse the radiation, and will not go off the other side, so it really doesn't destroy all that surrounding tissue. So this is really, really, you know, great care, particularly when we—you know, Brian mentioned children, children that are still growing, that they have to—you know, that you don't want to do the collateral damage. But even for—even for adults, that—you know, you don't want to go through several organs and damage the other side, but your brain, your throat, your mouth, where a lot of the radiation can cause significant damage. This is just, you know, incredible treatment and a really superb opportunity for—for patients in this area to be able to get it. And quite honestly, we will get other patients from around, because we'll have access to—access to this. So that—you know, that would be built in behind the—it'll be attached to the current cancer center, but really a huge opportunity for Marlboro to be a huge opportunity from a cancer center site to deliver great care. So I'm happy to answer questions about either or.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Attorney Falk?
Thanks, John. Just wrapping up. So as mentioned earlier, we're seeking a special permit. This is both a traditional special permit for the hospital use and a Section Six finding special permit for the hospital's pre-existing non-conforming use and structures in the A3 zoning district. Council issued—issued similar special permits for the hospital's cancer center in 2011 and the Women's Imaging Center in 2019. We believe this proposal meets the legal standards for a special permit and a Section Six finding. We're meeting with the City Site Plan Review Committee this Thursday to discuss the plan and to gather comments for the council. The project will also require formal site plan review following the special permit and a number of state approvals. At a time when many medical centers are facing significant challenges, Marlboro Hospital and UMass Memorial are investing millions of dollars to improve the lives of patients in Marlboro and surrounding communities. Look forward to working with the council and the Urban Affairs Committee on this important project for the hospital and the city. Look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Falk. Mr. Clerk, do you have a piece of correspondence?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know that we did receive a communication from Emily Greenwood of EKG Networking, that she is in support of Marlboro Hospital's proposed expansion.
Thank you. Any other members of the public speaking in favor?
I have a question.
No questions yet. Hang on.
All of ours.
It's okay. Any other members of the public speak in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is William Fisher. I live at 540 Bigelow Street, Marlboro, Mass. I've been a resident of Marlboro for the last forty-nine years. I have also been a patient at Marlboro Hospital. I had a heart attack, and they stabilized me twenty-some years ago and took me out, and I ended up triple bypassed. I currently have cancer, and so I go into Boston for my treatment there, but my whole family has benefited from Marlboro Hospital and all the services that Marlboro Hospital has. I also was the co-chair of the Patient and Family Advisory Committee, our council, at Marlboro Hospital. The Patient and Family Advisory Council was there to share our—our experiences with care at Marlboro Hospital and come up with better ways or improvements that we or our families thought could help enhance the patient experience. We also pooled the community members to get more ideas to enhance the patient care. I am currently—or for the last seven years, I've been a member of the Board of Trustees at Marlboro Hospital, again, trying to enhance the patient care and also working fiduciarily to try and make sure that we can financially sustain that fantastic asset that we have in this community. I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you vote to move this forward.
Thank you, Bill. Any other members of the public speak in favor?
Thank you. My name is Ann Malloy, and I live in Northborough at 144 West Street. I've been on the board of Marlboro Hospital for more years than I can remember, since before John Kelly started, and I've been a patient there, too, as have many members of my family, or all of them, in the emergency department. Probably all of you have had experience with some emergency department somewhere, and you know from current experience and everything that you hear in the media of—the stresses and challenges that are facing hospitals generally and emergency departments in particular now. I think this is—this is a great opportunity for the community and both the emergency department and—as John so practically explained, what the proton therapy project will do for the community. In my professional life, I'm a partner at the Worcester law firm, Mountain Dearborn &amp; Whiting. So I'm not a medical provider, but I'm the daughter, wife, and mother of physicians, and the sister of a nurse practitioner in New Britain, Connecticut. And so I've—I've lived the hospital environment in many ways. Professionally, I practice trust and estates law, and the first charitable gift that I encountered was for a client who was a resident of Marlboro, Beatrice Johnson, who's been dead for many years. Her family owned a lot of farmland in the community, and she wanted to give—the—I think they were here before the hospital was founded, and she wanted to give $5,000 to the hospital at her death. So you know, that was my first experience with this community, and I've felt a part of it ever since. I hope, as Bill did, that you'll move this forward. Thanks very much for the opportunity to talk with you in this beautiful council chamber.
Thank you, Ann. Any other members of the public speak in favor? Any other members of the public speak in favor? Any other members of the public speak in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Come on up to the mic—you gotta come up to the microphone. Yep, please.
Hello. My name is Jacqueline DiMaggio, and I live at 46 Bellevue Ave in Marlboro here, and I commend you for adding beds. I think it is a much-needed project for our community. As you know, there are lots of condos coming into Marlboro, and it's going to add hundreds of people to our community. So I am just curious to know if your expansion of the ED will include any kind of holding area space, because sitting in those seats and waiting and feeling like you're never going to get seen is not a very comfortable scenario. So I was just curious if there's any plan for that kind of space in your ED.
So I—you're referencing waiting room space in the emergency department. I—so the waiting room we have is actually pretty large, and currently we use part of our waiting room for patient care right now, just to—you know, because we don't have enough space, so we—it's kind of been modified to allow for—you know, to take care of three or four patients at a time. It's been walled off. Well, as—once the new space is built, the waiting room will go back to being purely a waiting room, and we will have more seats out there, but what we don't want is anyone sitting in the waiting room. So our goal is really to be able to have—bring patients back and get them in a bed and not have you waiting in the waiting room. So you know, you read all the time that the waiting rooms now are—you know, can be hours and hours. Our waiting time is still less than a lot of places, but we really want you—you know, for the time you arrive in the emergency department, our goal is have you seen by a—a provider in less than thirty minutes. And we're—we're working on that, but until we—you know, have some additional space, we're not going to be able to get there. So you know, if you've had to wait, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public?
My name's Pete Sharon, 95 Lakeshore Drive, Marlboro. Just a couple of questions. Sounds like a real exciting project, and it sounds like—I'm questioning, will both programs be built at the same time simultaneously?
More or less. The emergency department is scheduled to—you know, start off with some kind of utility pre-work, as there has to be some generated and so forth moved, and then the emergency department project will spark—will—will start, you know, kind of mid to late summer, where it'll really feel like a construction project. And the proton expansion, you know, to the cancer center will start one or two months behind that. So they—they will be in parallel at—at—at times, but you know, the beginning and the ending, they'll be alone.
One other question. With the expansion and everything, is there any plans for parking expansion?
So currently, right now, there is not any plans for parking expansion. You know, we have done some parking surveys and looking at kind of the available parking spots, you know, during our kind of peak hours, and you know, right now it looks like we're in good—we're in good—but we're in good shape. You know, I don't want to—you know, what—I'm not going to promise anything to you, but right now it looks like we have enough parking based on what we have. You know, there's always empty spots. We have a lot of construction vehicles there right now, and we have, you know, minimal parking kind of—the emergency department will only take up eleven current spots, so I don't think that will impact us at all. The proton B may take a few more up, but the way it's laid out, we should—we anticipate being okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition. Members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city counselors. Counselor Orom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, both of you. One question is, during this construction, will the emergency department still be available, or will we have to send people somewhere else?
It—it will be open at all times, and it has to be, so it will remain open during construction.
And I—one of my family members, we were going over this just about an hour or so ago, and he always said—he actually got brought up on parking, too. There just doesn't seem to be enough handicap spaces. Will there be additional parking for people that need the access—additional handicap parking? I don't know if it's called that any longer.
We will make sure there's addition—I—we'll make sure there's enough handicap spots. I don't know what the kind of the correct quote is, and I think we have more handicap spots right now than what is needed, because we frequently get patients, you know, or even staff members saying they—they need, you know, parking handicap spots. But if that's something that's been brought up, we can take a closer look at that and make sure, because that's—it's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, it was Natalie, a relative, that was questioning it. The cell tower is on the chimney right now in the back of the old center building. Will that—I couldn't tell from your plans if that's going to remain there, or is that going to get moved?
That will remain there. It's actually just been reinforced and kind of—
You're building the proton unit around it, is how you're doing it?
To the back of it. If you were to look at the kind of the very rear of the hospital, where the cancer center comes off, it will come directly off of the cancer center.
So you're not moving the cell tower? Is that what's my main question on that? And actually, I could have had a conflict many years ago. I worked at Marlboro Hospital for eleven years and then volunteered there for twenty years, so I know every inch of the space prior to all these additions, which I think is a fantastic asset to our community. And I welcome you to this project, and as long as you work with the abutters to make sure there's no disturbance and you keep that emergency room open, you have my vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orom. Counsel Vital.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three questions. Any idea—not locking you in, but how many new jobs will be created once these two wings get completed?
You know, that's a good question. So you know, so with the emergency department, they will be—you know, we're—we're taking care of thirty thousand patients a day now, you know, in the emergency department, a year now. The same staff, for the most part, will take care of those thirty thousand patients. So we increase staff as the volume will go up. We'll have to look at it a little bit, because it is a bigger space, to make sure that we have the kind of the correct spread of staff as there—there won't be as congestive an area, but you know, the staffing changes in the emergency department, I anticipate, would be minimal until we see, you know, more patients coming in.
How about—the how about the proton lab?
The proton lab will certainly require more staff, as it'll be an additional, you know, be its own piece of machinery to operate, as well as patients and to come into there and so forth.
Twenty, fifty?
Uh, no, I would say probably about—you know, about—probably about ten FTEs, off the top of my head, would be the kind of the best way for me to—
Very good.
Yep.
Second question. As you know, this is—Marlboro Hospital's in—the right in the middle of residential area. Have you done any traffic surveys with the addition? If you double the size of the emergency room, there's going to be an increase in traffic that's going to be going through those neighborhoods. Have you—have you looked at that at all?
Not to my—we—not to my knowledge that we have done any traffic studies. We've—you know, we've had some meetings with the abutters and discussed the ambulance traffic, and but there—you know, the majority of our patients do come by, you know, car, but there has been nothing else specifically around that.
Lastly, is there still a heliport in the back?
Yes.
Well, the expansion out back, it seems like the—the building is physically going to be going in the back. Will that impair—will that impact where the heliport is now?
Uh, no, the heliport does not need to move where it's at.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Vital. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm really excited about the changes. I do have a couple of questions. So you're expanding—the blue section is the emergency room expansion, the one that's further to the left, right?
Correct, yes.
The entrance to the emergency room is where? I just—like, is—it changing? Is the entrance to the emergency room changing? Because that's into the main entrance, right? So—
No, it's—the entrance will remain the same.
The entrance will remain the same.
You'll end up in the front. You'll end up at the front way, go to the left.
You'll still go to the left, so that's not changing at all. Okay, okay. I think—I'm—I'm glad to hear that. I think the proton therapy center is a great asset for the community. I am concerned of the increase in traffic, because more people coming in and out of here for everything. That—I think you guys have to reevaluate your—your parking, you know, to—to provide adequate parking, because yeah, it's—it's very tight to find a place to park. So either better signage to go around the back, or I don't know what—how you guys can address it, but I think that's critical to at least address it to some extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other questions from the counselors? Counsel Presiado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here. I'm very excited about this project. You know, I just had a friend recently be diagnosed with a brain tumor and had it successfully removed just last month, so he's currently going through cancer therapy. So you know, it'd be very exciting to let him know that this is available or will be available, hopefully, in our city. So I did have the same question as Counsel Vital about staffing. So we've kind of answered that, so there will be a slight increase in staffing in the emergency room specifically. Will there be any?
In the emergency department? Yeah. So at this time, I would say no, but I—you know, as we get closer, we're going to take a—but need to understand really how the workflow and how it's working. So you know, while I say no, that is not an absolute no by any means. We—you know, we—we will—if we're—we could be seeing five thousand more patients, you know, in a year of—you know, who knows what happens in—in the communities and healthcare, so—
Yeah, just because we have more beds doesn't mean we'll have more.
I would anticipate we get more patients, so we will—you know, most likely end up adding staff, but if—you know, kind of it's apples to apples. We—if we can take care of all the same patients in the same way, we would—we would. But if we're—if that doesn't work, and we need to add resources, particularly, you know, during the day shift where people are spread out, we would add staff. But you know, we'll have to—you know, we're doing some flow kind of studies and beginning to—beginning to talk about that, but we were really kind of waiting for a lot of this, you know, the construction and to kind of get going before we focus on the operational.
Understood. I also had another question regarding some safety concerns that were voiced by nurses a few months ago, and I don't know if—if expanding services from—if with the hospital will help address those concerns, or I don't know if—if anything's being done to coincide with these projects regarding that, but that might be something to—to consider as well.
What are the concerns?
I believe they had some concerns regarding their patients, security issues with their patients and how they would be able to interact with them, and I believe there were also some shorting staff—staff shortages that they had discussed.
We have added—this was—you know, prior—is this during the negotiation period?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have added additional security. You know, we have three security guards there twenty-four hours a day. We've just in—you know, less than a month ago, or about a month ago, we added an additional greeter, who's a security guard in the emergency department as well. So we really have, you know, four security guards there for, you know, sixteen hours a day, and three for, you know, kind of the overnight. So we have done—added some additional security.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Presiado. Any other questions or comments from the counselors? Questions or couns—comments from the counselors? Counsel Navin?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is in Urban Affairs, so after we get a draft permit, we'll send it around to managers for comment, and then we'll schedule a time for you to come in to the committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. Thank you, Council Navin. So any other questions or comments from the councilors? Questions or comments from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Agenda item number three.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed fiscal year 2026 operating budget in the amount of $215,302,846, which represents a 9.91% increase over the fiscal year 2025 appropriation. And the fiscal year 2026 budget is available for viewing in the clerk's office and on the city website.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee and to ask the city clerk to advertise instead of public hearing for May 19th, 2025, please.
Motion made in second to refer this item to the Finance Committee and advertise the public hearing for the fiscal year 26 budget for May 19th, 2025 at 8:00 p.m. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. The vote is 9-0. Agenda item number four.
Communication from city solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed home rule petition relative to the vacant Ward 7, City Council seat.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication and to move the item down to item number 11.
Motion's made in second to accept and place on file the communication and move this item down to agenda item number 11. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. The vote is 9-0. Agenda item number five.
Communication from city clerk Stephen Kerrigan regarding public hearing on the application for a special permit from 27 Curtis Ave LLC for a proposed renovation, reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming car wash located at 27 Curtis Ave, order number 25-1009397.
Councilor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, we had a public hearing, which was not, notice was not properly, properly sent to the abutters. So we are back at square one. I move to refer this to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for June 9th, and advertise.
Motion made in second to refer this item to the Urban Affairs Committee, will set a public hearing for June 9th and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? The motion carries. It's going to Urban with a public hearing, June 9th, and advertise. The vote is 9-0. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the Planning Board regarding an unfavorable recommendation on the proposed zoning map amendment for 36 Jefferson Street identified as map 56, parcel 153, order number 24251009330D.
Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion made in second to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? The communication is filed, 9-0. Agenda item number seven.
Application for renewal of a junk dealer secondhand dealer license from Roman Kimyaragrab, DBA Arthur &amp; Sons Shoe Repair, 107 Main Street.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to Public Service Committee, please.
Motion made in second to refer to the Public Services Committee. It'll be quick. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Going to Public Service. Vote is 9-0. Agenda item number eight.
Application for renewal of a junk dealer secondhand dealer license from Gerald Dumas, DBA Dumas &amp; Sons Secondhand Store, 65 Mechanic Street.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to Public Service Committee, please.
Motion made in second to refer to the Public Services Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? It's going to Public Service. The vote is 9-0. Agenda item number nine.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion's made in second to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Minutes are going to be filed, and the vote is 9-0. Agenda item number 10. Claims. Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to send the claims to Legal Department.
Motion made in second to send the claims to Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Claims are going to Legal. The vote's 9-0. Reports of committees. Who would like to go? Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on May 1st, 2025. Meeting convened at 6:00 p.m. We had two items on the agenda that evening. Our first order was order number 25-1009425. Communication from Mayor Dumas, transfer request in the amount of $581,700 from free cash to short-term interest to cover the interest payment on a bond anticipation note, which is a band. The chair read the letter from the mayor. On a motion by Council Brown, seconded by the chair, the committee recommends approval of the transfer in the amount of $587,700 with a request for suspension. Vote carried 4 to 0. Next item was order number 25-109426. Communication from Mayor Dumas, transfer of $4,187,233 from free cash to Health Care Trust Fund to cover the projected deficit. The chair read the letter from the mayor. On a motion by Council Brown, seconded by the chair, the committee recommends approval of the transfer in the amount of $4,187,233 with also a request for suspension. The motion carried 4 to 0. The meeting did adjourn at 6:41 p.m. That's the end of my report, Mr. President, and I will be asking for two suspensions this evening.
All right.
For the first, yep, for the first one would be on order number 25-1009425.
Motion's been made in second for a suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed? Suspension carries, 9-0. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer request in the amount of $581,000, $581,700, please.
Motion made in second to approve the transfer of $587,007 and $7, right?
That is correct, sir. Mr. President.
Motion made in second to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Transfer carries, 9-0. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to ask for a suspension on order number 25-109426, please.
Request for suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed? Suspension carries, 9-0. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer request in the amount of $4,187,233, please.
Motion made in second to approve the transfer of $4,187,233. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed? Transfer carries. The vote is 9-0. Council Roby? Oh, you go, go ahead. I'm sorry, Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a public service announcement. Finance Committee will meet on May 12th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We'll meet at May 13th, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. And we'll also meet on May 14th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. And this is to take up the proposed fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Irish. Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Council Urban Affairs and Housing Committee also met on Thursday, May 1st. Our posted time was 6:30. We started at 6:45. We had two items on our agenda. Order number 25109378 referencing order number 21108214C, an application for a special permit from Green Meadow Farms LLC to allow for the sale of medical marijuana in addition to the existing sale of adult-use marijuana at a facility under construction at 239 Boston Post Road West. The chair read through the comments from the department managers and read through the draft decision. The chair noted that number four in the findings of facts may not be needed. Also, as I wrote this up, I realized how poorly I had looked at this, noting that in the finding of facts, number three, the date of May 24th, 2025 is not correct, and we never voted to transfer the original special permit. We did vote on May 20th, 2024 to grant an extension of the date. The special permit would lapse. Whether this needs to be in the document will be up to the solicitor. In finding of facts, number five, the filing date was February 11th, 2025, and it was on the council's February 24th agenda. And again, the solicitor can decide what dates need to be there. Council Navin moved to recommend approval of the amendment to the special permit to allow for the sale of medical marijuana. It was seconded, and the vote carried 4 to 0. I will ask for a suspension tonight to have this referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Do I do that now?
Sure.
Motion's been made for a suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed? Suspension carries, 9-0. Council Roby.
So move to refer this order to the solicitor to be put in proper form and back on our agenda for the next meeting.
Motion made in second to refer this item to the solicitor, put in proper format, to send back for our next meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those, oh, Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just for clarification, you brought this up, Counselor, but we never passed the transferring the license to the other party?
Nor do we need to.
Oh, nor do we need to. Okay, that's...
The permit exists.
Okay, I didn't know if we were involved in the handoff.
No.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Council Dusset. On the motion to refer to the solicitor, all those in favor? Opposed? The item's going to the solicitor, put in proper format. The vote's 9-0. Council Roby.
And the second item on our agenda was order number 25109330A, the proposed zoning map amendment from Remunto Neto, owner of 36 Jefferson Street, to rezone 36 Jefferson Street identified as map 56, parcel 153, from Residence B to Neighborhood Business. The chair read the letter from the Planning Board from their April 28th meeting, where a negative recommendation carried on a vote of 5 to 0. Committee members discussed their agreement with the Planning Board's recommendation, and the chair read a letter from Council Pressiado, who was not able to attend, where he also stated his opinion this should not be approved. Council Navin moved to recommend denial of the proposed zoning amendment to rezone 36 Jefferson Street from Residence B to Neighborhood Business. It was seconded, and the vote carried 4 to 0. Council Dusset moved to adjourn, and we adjourned at 7:15. This one can just lay on the table.
Any public service announcements?
The Urban Affairs Committee will meet on the 13th at 6:30. We will be taking up the Washington...
Okay, any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Agenda item 11.
Order number 25-109414, procedure to fill the vacant Ward 7. Counselor position, the recommendation of the Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee is to approve home rule petition.
Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of the committee to approve, please.
Motion's been made in second to approve the home rule petition. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to compliment the city solicitor for making it so simple, sweet, and elegant. So it's nice to see a lawyer clarify things. Thank you.
I'm sure he's going to appreciate that. Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other comments or questions from the councilors? On the motion to approve the home rule petition, all those in favor? Opposed? Let the record reflect it, it's a unanimous vote of 9-0 to approve the home rule petition. Agenda 12.
Order number 25-109404, grant acceptance in the amount of $450,000 awarded to the city of Marlborough for various projects as part of the fiscal year 2025 state budget earmark funding. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the following: $25,000 for the boiler at City Hall, but to be used for the Walker Building boiler; $30,000 for security cameras at public housing; $35,000 for the dog park; $75,000 for the temporary speed humps; and $200,000 for the MEDC shuttle.
Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have an individual vote on each of those earmarks, please.
Sure, so fire away.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the first one, the $25,000 for the boiler at City Hall to be used for the Walker Building boiler.
Motion's made in second to approve $25,000 for the boiler at City Hall. Any discussion on that motion? Council Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the Finance Committee meeting. I did listen to it, and I was a little confused about the discussion about the fact that they're really not going to use this for the City Hall, they're going to use it for the Walker Building. And so I was going to suggest that this be denied, but in looking at the documentation that came from the state, it doesn't really say what it's being used for, it just says boiler. So I'm okay with this. I'm a little uncomfortable. I wish there was a better way to do this, because I know we need a City Hall boiler, but my understanding from DPW is that there will be a capital, if it's not already in the capital, there will be a capital request to take care of this. But they need to take care of the funding that's already been spent on the Walker Building.
Any other comments or questions on the motion to approve the $25,000 for the boiler? All those in favor? Opposed? $25,000 approved, 9-0. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next earmark was $30,000 for security cameras at public housing.
Motion made in second to approve the $30,000 for security cameras at the CDA housing projects. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? $30,000 is approved. The vote's 9-0. Council Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next earmark is $35,000 for the dog park.
Motion made in second to approve the $35,000 for the dog park. Any discussion on the motion? Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Irish. Was the dog park already built, or is this another fund?
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
The dog park was built? Is this the dog park that was built, or is it different money? So we already spent that?
No.
Kind of, sort of. Okay, I just wanted clarification, that's all. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion to approve the $35,000 for the dog park? All those in favor? Opposed? $35,000 approved. The vote is nine-zero. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next earmark is $75,000 for the temporary speed bumps. And Counsel Vital did oppose that, but that's the next one.
Motion made in second to approve the $75,000 for speed humps. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Roby.
Thank you. Again, I was not at the meeting, but I did talk to the DPW. I actually was going to vote against this. I hate speed humps, speed bumps, temporary or otherwise, as I believe most of the Traffic Commission members do. I know they're having a lot of discussion on slowing down traffic and how to deal with this issue. My understanding is although they did not request it, they would like the money, and most of the money will actually be going towards signage that will tell people how fast they're going and to slow down. So I think to me that that cost and need across the city is much more important than a couple of pieces of plastic they can throw down on the road to irritate the drivers. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Counsel Vital.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did some research since our meeting. I was against it before, but now I'm even more against it. There's a wonderful article entitled "Why Municipalities Are Moving Away From Speed Humps As Traffic Calming Solution," and they must give, one, two, three, four, five, six, many, many, many reasons, not just destroying people's cars, but other environmental reasons and speeding reasons, just a whole bunch. It's a terrible, terrible thing to have in our, in our city. And they can check out that article if you want. Again, it's entitled "Municipalities Are Moving Away From Speed Humps As A Traffic Calming Solution." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Vital. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I request Counsel Vital to send that link to Karen so she can send it with the rest of the city council. But I'm actually for speed bumps, speed humps. So firsthand experience, Grove Street in Framingham, right? They got five speed bumps that they laid down within a mile in the middle of nowhere, okay? And I, that was, that's been my shortcut back and forth between Marlborough and Framingham since the 80s, okay? When, before these things came in, it was a common truck, it was a common truck pass. You'd see a lot of heavy trucks on it and stuff like that, and they'd either be going, heaven forbid, around, so eventually on Pomider or going up Nixon. God only help them. But with those five speed bumps that they put in place, that street's only getting local traffic. And I consider that to be a move in the right direction. I'll still take it because I'm so close to it. I know how to get around speed bumps. But, you know, speed bumps can be very effective at, at traffic calming if they're located at the right location. And there are certain streets I would love to see, you know, and it's, it's a, it's an emotional decision. I understand that. But there are certain streets that people just go way too fast based upon what they think they can do. And that's what the traffic calming's all about. But I'm obviously for it.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counsel Navin?
Quite a bit of engagement here on a very exciting topic. I like to see everybody really stepping up for this one. I, I share Counsel Roby's concerns about speed bumps. I've, I've had this experience a lot in a couple of different roles in public service. People always think speed bumps are a good idea until they go in, and then oftentimes it is the very people who request them, that request them to be taken out. And that's neither here nor there. I did also talk to the DPW Commissioner, and he assured me that, that a lot of this money would be going towards traffic calming. And anybody here who has gone to Traffic Commission and who has begged the Traffic Commission to take up a request knows how, how the process goes and has likely heard that the Traffic Commission, particularly the Fire Chief, is against speed humps and speed bumps due to the wear and tear it takes on the very expensive equipment that we also approve here in this body. But the DPW Commissioner did assure me that they will be taking this under consideration and using them as a last resort if necessary. But we also know that it takes quite a bit of time when someone calls to say they're speeding on State Street, they're speeding on Bolton Street, they're speeding on, well, Church, Church Street. I was showing my Ward 6 roots, Counsel Roby, but across the city. And so, and we know that it takes a long time to get those speed signs, and we know those speed signs are expensive. So I am not overly supportive of speed humps, but I am very much not in favor of telling the state that they can have some of their money back when they have decided to send it to our city. And so, in that regard, I will take any amount of money that they want to send our way for our taxpayers. So with that, I will be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. Counsel Preciado.
I hate to prolong this, but I also share the same sentiments as Counsel Navin and Roby. It'd be great to have this as traffic calming measures, and if the DPW Commissioner has assured us that there will be very few speed bumps, then I'm for this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Preciado. Anyone else? Everybody's good? On the motion to approve $75,000 for speed humps. All those in favor? Opposed? Won? Motion carries. The vote is eight to one. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last earmark was for $200,000 for the MEDC shuttle.
Motion made in second to approve $200,000 for the MEDC shuttle service. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The $200,000 for the MEDC shuttle is approved. The vote is nine-zero. Agenda item 13.
Order number 25-109405, a transfer of $63,600 from reserved for salaries to various accounts for salary and sick leave buyback for the mayor's office and the police department. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer, please.
Motion made in second to approve the transfers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Transfers carry. The vote is nine-zero. Agenda item 14.
Order number 25-109406, a transfer of $147,581.95 from reserved for salaries to various accounts to fund the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Command Officers Association Local 366. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer, please.
Motion made in second to approve the command officers contract. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Transfers carry. The vote is nine-zero. Agenda item number 15.
Order number 25-109407, a transfer in the amount of $167,302.32 from reserved for salaries to various accounts to fund the cost-of-living adjustment and stipend for our non-union employees.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the transfer.
Motion made in second to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The transfer carries. The vote is nine-zero. Agenda item 16.
Order number 25-109408, transfer of $784,320 from Economic Development to MEDC funding for the fiscal year 2026 operating budget of MEDC, and a transfer request in the amount of $150,000 from Economic Development to MEDC funding for the Economic Development Toolbox. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take this in two votes, please. First, the MEDC budget, please.
Motion made in second to approve the MEDC fiscal year 26 budget of $784,320. Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The vote is approved. The vote is eight to one. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next would be the $150,000 for the toolbox, please.
Motion made in second to approve the $150,000 for the toolbox at MEDC. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The MEDC Toolbox program is approved. The vote is nine-zero. Agenda item 17.
Order number 25-109409, MWRA Lead Loan Program Bond Requesting the Amount of $750,000 to Replace Galvanized and Brass Water Services Pursuant to New Mass DEP Regulations.
I'm reading my bold print this time. Counsel Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. May the record show that I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Please let the record reflect that Counsel Navin will not be participating in this item. Okay, counsel, since this is a bond, it is a roll call vote. Well, first, I'll need a motion. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the bond, please.
Motion's made in second to approve the bond for $750,000. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll. Counsel Oram?
Yes.
Counsel Preciado?
Yes.
Counsel Fuchillo is absent. Counsel LeBrown?
Yes.
Counsel Vital?
Yes.
Counsel Roby?
Yes.
Counsel Ossing?
Yes.
Counsel Irish?
Yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Yes.
And Counsel Navin is abstaining. Eight in favor? One. Sure. That just made it. The motion to approve the bond for $750,000 is approved by a vote of eight to zero. With one abstention and two, one absent and one vacant. Is that the right way to characterize? Sure they can. Okay. Agenda item 18.
Order number 25-109411, proposed ordinance amendment to City Code, Chapter 125 Personnel, Section 6 Salary Schedule Regarding the Part-Time Assistant Electrical and Plumbing Inspectors. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the change to the amendment, please.
Motion's made in second to approve the salary ordinance change for the Assistant Electrical and Plumbing Inspectors. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, this is an ordinance change. It's required to go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading? All those in favor? Opposed? That passes. The vote is nine-zero. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled? All those in favor? Opposed? That also passes. Nine-zero. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained? All those in favor? Opposed? That also passes. Nine-zero. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Seeing none, the salary ordinance change is approved. Counsel Navin?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's made in second to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:56. Have a good evening, everyone.